The meeting is called to order at 7:06 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of April 17th, 2018 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second that the board approve the following consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of March 27, 2018 is submitted. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes with Addendum. The request to approve the recommended bidders is listed. Yes, may I have a motion and a second, please? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. You have your attached treasurer's report for the month ending February 28, 2018. May I have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending February 28, 2018 be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right, we have special reports.
We do, yes, yes, we have some special reports.
Tonight, right?
Tonight, yes.
Okay.
So, I think we have two special reports. The first being, I don't have my computer on, the textbook presentation. So, it's, I have Kristen Williamson and Lisa Henry, and I see Laura Case as well, to talk about some ELA textbooks or books.
All right, thank you.
Now, I set the bar really low for you by me stumbling over my words, so I know you guys will do a great job.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to present two books that I am asking for board approval. Both of these books are to be used in the English 12 elective curriculum. The course is Modern War Through Literature. And I would like to introduce each book to you and give you a couple quotes from each book and some reviews of them as well. The first book is a memoir. It's called House to House. It was published in 2006 by Staff Sergeant David Belavia, and it'll be used in the Modern War Through Literature course. Staff Sergeant David Belavia is considered to be one of the great heroes of the Iraq War. He captures the brutal action and raw intensity of leading his third platoon, Alpha Company, into a lethally choreographed kill zone, the booby-trapped, explosive-laden houses of Fallujah's militant insurgents, bringing to searing life the terrifying intimacy of hand-to-hand infantry combat. This stunning war memoir features an indelibly drawn cast of characters, not all of whom would make it out of the city alive, as well as chilling accounts of Belavia's singular courage. He entered a house alone, used every weapon at his disposal in the fight, in his life against the enemy. Belavia was awarded the Silver Star and was nominated for the Medal of Honor. Something you might find interesting to know, he is a resident in the Batavia area, and one of my goals, if this book is approved, is to have him come and speak with my class. I think they would really benefit from listening to the man who went through these experiences and chronicled in his memoir. A couple quotes from him from this memoir. "All the sins I've committed, I've done them with one objective, to keep my men alive. Those kids in my squad, those kids of mine, they are everything. My wife doesn't understand this job or why I do it. My son is too young. My dad wouldn't get it if I tried to explain. My mom would have a heart attack. The need to keep my men alive makes everything else negotiable, and everyone and everything a potential threat." One of the things I really focus on with this course and the short fiction we read is the impact of after serving in war, coming back home, the effects of being back home, adjusting to being a civilian again, and having the war never truly leave you, and having to reconcile with those feelings of what you've experienced in war. That's something I think our students at the senior level course need to think about and experience through the literature and the nonfiction we read. Here's another comment from Belavia in this memoir. "I am a Christian, but my time in Iraq has convinced me that God doesn't want to hear from me anymore. I've done things that he can never forgive. I've done them consciously. I've made decisions I must live with for years to come. I am not a victim. In each instance, I heard my conscience call for restraint. I told it to shut up and let me handle my business. All the sins I've committed, I've done with one objective, to keep my men alive." Those are some of the quotes from the memoir. In an interview, Belavia said that he viewed writing this memoir as an obligation, telling the truth about the true horror of war, so it will not be lost. Kirkus Reviews gave this book a high rating. They reviewed it with saying, "This rapid-fire recreation of the block-by-block fighting captures perfectly the horror of war. In an era of high-tech weaponry, Belavia puts us on the ground with modern-day grunts who could just as easily be fighting in World War II in Europe. They are filthy, hot, tired, and dehydrated as they slog through rubble, broken glass, and dead bodies to conduct risky searches of houses that may be clean or filled with booby traps and enemy soldiers. The frantic, present-tense narrative abounds with scenes and dialogue that make this account of battle read like a realistic war novel." The few students that I have had read this and report to me about reading this book are into it from page one, and I've had young men read this book that have never read a book before without being forced to do so. So, I say that right there is quite a recommendation from teenagers today. The second book I would like to present is called Redeployment. This was published in 2014. It was published by U.S. Marine Corps Iraq War Veteran Phil Clay. This, too, will be used in the Modern War Through Literature elective. This book is unique in that it is fiction. It's a collection of stories, each in a different voice. Some of them set in Iraq, mostly in the Wobegon towns of Anbar Province, where Clay served as a tour as a public affairs officer, and some are set in the United States after the various characters have returned home. Each story calls forth a different dilemma or difficult moment, nearly all of them rendered with an exactitude that conveys precisely the push-me, pull-you feelings that war evokes. Pride, pity, elation, disgust, often pulsing through the same character simultaneously. The best literature of the Vietnam War, like Tim O'Brien's The Things They Carried, which, by the way, is taught to all of our juniors in American literature, is known for capturing the ways that the Vietnam War conflict splintered the psyches of men who fought it and how it rattled around in their minds and in the minds of the people who loved them long after the fighting ended. This book, Redeployment, is similarly compared. Phil Clay, the Marine who served in Iraq, grapples with a different war but aims for a similar effect, showing us, the readers, the myriad human manifestations that result from the collision of young, heavily armored Americans with a fractured and deeply foreign country that very few of them even remotely understand. I'd like to share a short excerpt from Redeployment. The very first story grabs you and makes you think about something again probably a lot of our young people don't think about, and that's when you come home from a deployment, and what it's like readjusting. This soldier has just returned from a nine-month deployment. He and his wife are walking around a mall in Wilmington. Last time you walked down a city street, your Marine on point went down the side of the road, checking ahead and scanning the roofs across from him. The Marine behind him checks the window on the top levels of the buildings. The Marine behind him gets the windows a little lower, and so on down until your guys have the street level covered, and the Marine in back has the rear. In a city, there's a million places they can kill you from. It freaks you out at first, but you go through like you were trained, and it works. In Wilmington, you don't have a squad. You don't have a battle buddy. You don't even have a weapon. You startle 10 times checking for it, and it's not there. You're safe, so your alertness should be at white, but it's not. Instead, you're stuck in an American Eagle outfit, or your wife gives you some clothes to try on, and you walk into the tiny dressing room. You close the door, and you don't want to open it again. Kirkus Review says about Redeployment, "It's a sharp set of stories about U.S. soldiers in the Iraq and Afghanistan wars and their aftermaths, with violence and gallows humor dealt out in equal measure. Clay is a Marine veteran who served in Iraq, and the 12 stories reveal a deep understanding of the tedium, chaos, and bloodshed of war, as well as the emotional disorientation that comes with returning home from it. This is a no-nonsense and informed reckoning with combat." And those are those two novels.
I'd just like to say a quick word about this. My name is Lisa Henry, and I'm the chair of the English department. Hi, everybody. Laura has spoken to the specifics of each of these books that we'd like to use for this course, but in addition, I'd just like to speak to the value of this course as a senior English elective, which is one of the powers of our English department. When she first approached me with the idea for this course a few years ago, I was immediately intrigued. War in the military have been romanticized through films, books, and video games. Fortnite, anyone? Laura's idea to have students read and discuss war literature provides a much-needed critical analysis of the effects and issues around war. I ran into a student who took my course last semester, just the other day. I haven't even told this to Laura. He told me he's in the course right now and how powerful this course has been for him. It's really made him change his views about war, and it's helped him understand the consequences in a way that he never thought of before. Great literature does not shy away from difficult topics. It doesn't shy away from difficult words. This includes war. By encouraging our students to read books such as House to House and Redeployment, we're helping our students to become critical thinkers, and we're encouraging them to engage with the world around them on a deeper level. Please let us know if you have any questions. I hope that you get a chance to read one or both of these powerful and emotional books. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Barb?
Can I audit your class? You know, I am retired, so I can come. Please join us.
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I happen to have a family member who's a veteran, and, you know, it's interesting watching the, like you're saying about assimilating back into normal life. I'm quite a bit older than this relative, and I anticipated that. And he's doing fine, but you could see the adjustment, and you can see, like, he doesn't like fireworks. You know, gee, why not? You know? And these are things, I mean, there's just a myriad of things that happen to these veterans, and we owe them such a debt of gratitude, but it's just not an easy thing. It has been glamorized, you know, America First and all that, back World War II, the greatest country on earth and all that, and war was much easier than it actually is. And then when you put it into video games, just like you're talking about, yeah, it's a very complicated situation and very timely. So, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention and letting us know about this.
Thank you very much. Are we done?
Nicely done. Thank you.
We have our second special presentation for the evening is Mr. Brian Brecko and Nicole Whitehead. Brian is our music department chair, and Nicole, I think you've seen her a lot here lately, is our director of STEAM. And I'll just start with, for the board members who were able to attend the showing of Angst last night, just kudos to our PAB, but also to Nicole Whitehead, who took the lead working with that, our PAB organization at Penn University to do all the legwork to bring that film. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. It was my pleasure.
All right, I just want to start by saying thank you so much for having me here tonight to present to you an overview of the music program. Do I use this little thing right here?
Yeah, you go for it.
What do I have to do here?
I'll do it.
Okay, you do it.
Teamwork, please.
So, it was so nice to be able to find a Tuesday night where there wasn't a concert, so I could come and actually talk to you guys. So, thanks again so much for having us here. So, tonight, we're going to give you, I have a lot to tell you, so I'm going to try and do it quickly and not spend too much time on each thing, but it's some exciting stuff here. So, we're going to do an overview of the program. We're going to talk about some of our instructional practices. I'm going to get a chance to brag a little bit and talk about our notable achievements, and then I'm going to keep you up to date on some of our new and exciting initiatives that we're doing in the music department. So, I just want to start off by taking you right through our K-12 program, and I'll start with the K-5 program. Our students in kindergarten through fifth grade enjoy classroom music two times per six-day cycle for 35 minutes, and they also have the option to participate in performing music, and that being Suzuki Strings, which I know many of you are familiar with, and our traditional string program, our band, and our chorus programs. To talk a little bit about the each individual program, the classroom music and the performing music, in our classroom music program, at the K-2 level, you know, our curriculum really focuses on kind of a K-2, 3, 5 model, and at the K-2 level, students are really experiencing music in many different ways for the first time. They're getting a chance to express themselves using their voice in many different ways, being taught how to manipulate their bodies and move to music in appropriate ways, and they're getting their first chance to put their hands on, in many cases, they're getting their first chance to put their hands on some classroom instruments for the first time in that K-2 program. And then as they get older in the elementary level, they just build on those things. So, if you were to go into a 3, 5 classroom, you'd see students really using their voice, singing, moving around the classroom to music selections, and really doing some pretty complicated things on some classroom instruments. We have a strong foundation, and a lot of our teachers like to use the ORF method, and if any of you are familiar with that, it's basically, these students are getting a chance to start on what looks a lot like a xylophone. So, it's a keyboard percussion instrument. So, we're really proud of that because that really kind of is the basis for them learning some skills on piano, and which we'll get into a little bit as we move into the upper grades. And of course, our performing music, they're able to start working in Suzuki program as early as grade one, and that's another thing that we're really, really proud of here in Penfield. We're one of the few schools that actually offers a Suzuki program, and I'm very proud to say that we just held our 52nd annual Suzuki concert just last week. So, going strong, and if any of you were there to see the number of students that was onstage, when they did the play-down, they got all the way to the end, it was time to do Mississippi Hot Dog with everybody. All those kids up onstage playing that together is pretty impressive. So, I think we might have something of a picture of that coming up. And then to go on, as they get up into Bay Trail, the 6-8 program, their schedule, as you know, they're on the block schedule, so they meet one per three, one time per three-day cycle, and they meet for 60 minutes at a time each class. At this point, students have a decision to make. They get to choose to participate in classroom music, band, orchestra, or chorus. So, typically, we see the students that start performing music in the elementary, like playing in band, chorus, and orchestra, we see them continue, going on into Bay Trail and continuing that track of being in performing music. That's typical, not always the case, but students who have not participated in a performing ensemble at the elementary, they still participate in music at the middle school level, and they get a chance to be involved in our classroom music curriculum. And the 6-8 program is really exciting because, especially the classroom program for those kids that haven't played in band, orchestra, and chorus, because they get to, they get to make more decisions about what path they want to take in general music. So, as they move through 6th, 7th, and 8th, they're introduced in the 6th grade level to some keyboarding, piano, and then they start to go into guitar a little bit in 7th grade, and then by the time they get into 8th grade, they really get to hone their skills on one of those instruments. So, one of the questions I get asked a lot is, "Do you give piano lessons here at Penfield?" And my answer to that is, we don't give piano lessons in the same sense as we give flute, saxophone, trumpet, violin, viola, bass, harp, those kind of lessons, but we have a very strong keyboarding curriculum. So, any student who comes up through Penfield, K-8, they're going to get a chance to get their hands on those instruments at some point, and they have a chance to really spend a lot of time if they do choose to do that. By the time they get through 8th grade, they can have some pretty serious chops on the piano or the guitar, and that leads us to...
My son right now is an 8th grader, taking keyboarding, and I enjoy what he performs at home as well.
Yeah. So, up here, you get a chance to see some of our fine students in action. I believe we have a couple elementary folks up there at the top putting on some performances, and that one at the bottom, that was a recent middle school concert. Yeah, so, nice packed house there.
How sweet is that?
It's good. All right, talk a little bit about our 9-12 program. So, the students meet on a nine-period schedule. They meet once every day for 40 minutes, and students get to further choose a wide variety of classroom and performance offerings, and things like Music Theory I, and students who really want to get in-depth with music theory and understand the inner workings of how musical composition happens and how songs are put together and how to write music, record music, they go on to learn AP Music Theory and eventually take an AP Music Theory test. Music in Our Lives is offered, which is a general music course. You get a very brief outline of some music history. You get a chance to learn a little bit of music theory in that course, Music in Our Lives, and then you also get a chance to hone your skills again on keyboard and guitar. So, if you're one of those students that went through the middle school program, 6-8, and said, "Hey, I really want to learn piano. I really want to get good at this," you can continue that on when you're in high school. And so, by the time these kids are through high school, once again, they've had a pretty solid foundation on what to do on some of these chordal instruments like keyboard and guitar. Of course, they can choose chorus, band, and orchestra at the high school. We have voice classes here at the high school, which we feel very fortunate to have. If you walk through the halls, you'll get a chance to hear, down in the music wing, you'll get a chance to hear these students working with Mrs. Monti, they'll be in there, and they are in, this is an amazing course, because these students who typically, they're not, I don't know any student that wants to take a risk to stand in front of a crowd and sing a solo, sing a solo in front of a group of people. And so, these kids, every day, get up in front of their peers and sing a solo, and then they get feedback from their peers about what they sound like, what they can work on, their vocal technique, and it's a fabulous class. And by the time they're a senior, they have a chance to actually take that leap and stand on the stage by themselves, sing a solo for an audience.
May 31st.
May 31st. That's the night of vocal music. And so, seniors get the privilege of doing that if they've gone through voice classes. That's what happens at the advanced voice class level. So, it's pretty outstanding stuff. And of course, you know, I could talk to you a mile long about all of our extracurricular bands, jazz ensembles, vocal ensembles, vocal jazz ensembles. We'd be here all night. So, wanted to show you a little bit, this is what's happening up at the high school. So, Mrs. Monti and the ladies wanted to show off a little bit of their swag for Select Women's Choir. They always get like a sweater or a sweatshirt every year, so that's their Select Women's Choir gear this year. Up there on the top there, that's a great shot of when we had all the students on the stage for one of our jazz fundraiser performances. It was a good time. And of course, this is a nice shot down in the corner of the kids going out into the community and singing Christmas carols and holiday music to one of our nursing homes in the local area, so doing a little bit of a community service. So, to quickly summarize what, all the things that I just talked to you about, taking a student from kindergarten to 12th grade, really quickly through their, out their musical career, easily said, students in K-8, all students participate in music. So, that's a really, really great thing that, you know, and they have some choices along the way when they, when they get into their middle school and their upper levels in elementary school, they're all doing music. It's great. 9-12, they are required to take a commencement art and music credit, and a lot of students choose to do that through music, a lot of students play in an ensemble, or maybe take Music in Our Lives, one of those general music courses. And students who are really serious about music, that are thinking, "Hey, maybe I want to major in music in college, or I just want to really have that deep knowledge of music," they have an option to take a five-credit music sequence. So, they have to take two classes from what we've deemed as a skill development, which essentially is a performing ensemble, and they take two credits from a music knowledge attitude development, which is essentially a general music course. And then to get that fifth, they just have to take one additional from either of those areas, and then they get their five-unit sequence. So, to talk a little bit about our instructional practices, we do feel here in Penfield that we have a very strong music curriculum, and we're very happy to say that it is indeed guaranteed and viable. And it always, it's always, I guess it's just very flattering to hear that when I go out into the community, and Nicole and I were actually at the New York State New Standards Meeting, and the presenter, who is a retired music administrator from Webster, came over to talk to us, to Nicole and I, and we're sitting there trying to figure out what's what with all these new standards, and she found out that we were from Penfield, and pretty much the first words out of her mouth were, "Wow, Penfield has an amazing music curriculum." And so, that's well-known in the county, you know, that we are on the cutting edge of what's going on in music education. Another thing I'd like to speak to is our strong consistency, K-12. You know, the thing that really makes this music department strong is our willingness to work together. We have a great staff in the music department, and aside from all of our differences that we may have personal or philosophical on how to teach music education, the thing that makes us so consistent is that we're willing to set those things aside to say, "Here's what our K-12 curriculum is, and we're going to teach it all the same way," right down to how do you count a quarter note? Okay? Because, believe it or not, it's a very important thing. And it can be very confusing if you got one elementary school teaching it one way and another elementary. So, just that consistency of everyone teaching the same thing, and that's what, and I've been in the district now 11 years, and when I first started here, that was what really floored me. You know, that's been going on for a very long time here in Penfield, is just the understanding that we as, you know, the Penfield Music Department really care to come together and teach music all the same way. Of course, we focus on critical thinking skills, and that's embedded in our curriculum. Teacher modeling, I would challenge anyone to walk through any of our schools in any of our music classrooms, and you're going to see someone playing a trumpet, someone's playing, the teacher's playing a saxophone, the teacher is singing for the students, the teacher is right over their shoulder banging out something on the keyboard or playing the guitar. So, the high use of teacher modeling, that's going on a lot in the music department. And of course, embedded in our curriculum, a use of common formative and summative assessments, you know, we really like to think of every class, and I know that this isn't special to music, you know? Every class is a formative assessment. So, when you come to music class, you know, there's a formative assessment going on every single time. So, I don't necessarily need to read every single one of these for you up here on the slide there. They speak for themselves. And so, you just look, we look at the number of students that we have participating throughout the county and state level that go to these honor ensembles. It's really a true feather in our cap. There's something up there that I want to mention, that there's something that's missing from up there that I want to mention, and of course, that's the best communities for music education that we, that we've won last year, and we should be finding out results very, very soon on this year's. And that's a true testament to the support of the Board of Education, the administration, and the community coming together, that best communities for music education, the board, you know, search of the board and the administration.
And the hard work of you and your teachers and the students.
Well, thank you, but really, really appreciate the support from this group. So, a couple of our exciting initiatives that we're embarking on here, so we've talked a little bit about the new New York State Standards for the Arts. The plan for New York State was to roll these standards out this year to get an introduction and full implementation by next school year. So, already, we see a number of our teachers incorporating those new standards into their lesson planning, and in all honesty, a lot of it is what we're doing already and kind of changing some of the verbiage around what it really is. the verbiage around what it really is. And so, we're going to be working to revising, not necessarily rewriting, because we don't necessarily know that it needs that, but revising our curriculum to incorporate those new New York State standards. So, over the next few years, we're going to be working to do that. And of course, some professional development opportunities. We, as a music department, have been trying diligently to incorporate the use of the Microsoft 365 system, which is a district initiative. And so, we've really tried to grab a hold of that and use that program to our advantage. And we're actually finding quite a bit of success with that. So, we're very happy with it.
And kudos, because you're one of the first departments that's housing your curriculum there as well, which is a great initiative for your department, so.
So, we like to, you know, things like Microsoft 365, we put our curriculum up there. We use that platform for things like sharing recordings of concerts nowadays. So, we're kind of moving in that direction too, of being able to put our concert recordings like in cloud storage. So, it's good for archiving and it's very, very easy to share than having a physical copy of a DVD. We're almost coming to that age. And now, we're at the point where it's like, what's a CD anymore? Now, we want the vinyl again. Okay? So, we're back to vinyl, what's a CD anymore? Now, we're really, really close to going, what's a DVD? It's going to happen. So, that's what we're trying to do with that Microsoft 365. And of course, using the resources that we have around us statewide to come and talk to us about things like, you know, these new standards and just new initiatives in music education in general. So, I think that's our last slide. And, you know, I just want to say one more time, thank you very much for having me here. It's a pleasure to be here to present to you. And thanks very much for your support. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions or comments for Brian?
I have a call, I have a question.
Yes, Lisa.
We were whispering over here when you were talking about, because now we all have these fancy machines and we wanted to know if we could get the concerts on our SharePoint.
Is that what the plan is?
That's the first I've heard of it. But, it can be a plan.
The superintendent will gladly look into that.
Yeah, there we go.
It's a great idea.
Some copyright things and, you know, we got to clear all that.
I won't sell tickets.
There's all these details. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, wait, I had another comment.
Oh, yes.
Because my children participate in music and it's just everybody's enthusiasm. It's nice to see your enthusiasm tonight when you present, but every teacher I've always come across in music here in this district is just so, just so enthusiastic to share music. And I really appreciate that. So, if you could, you know, share that with your staff.
I will. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We're lucky. Carol?
I'm listening to you. We were lucky to have our three. Okay.
Oh, yes.
We can hear you.
Just watching, it's going to turn off on me. I'm listening to you and I'm thinking of our three daughters who are so lucky to have been part of the music program, each one of them differently. And I'm listening, and I think what I do love about your presentation is that there is just, it's all celebration of what you're doing and people who are just so enthusiastic about what they're doing, you know, what Lisa just mentioned also. And I think it's just wonderful. And it's just such a huge testimony to the passion that you have, the community that supports this program, but...
And we don't take that for granted, so.
No, we should. And we should never take it for granted, but then, our students are just amazing also. And, but the way you're able to guide them, the way we have teachers who support them and, I mean, seeing that you're so on top of the new standards and using all these things, I'm so thankful for that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Barb?
My question, of course, has to deal with Suzuki. And you said that we are one of the few remaining schools that offer. Is that going to be an issue as hiring Suzuki replacements or teachers that have Suzuki training?
Not necessarily, because we do see a lot of applicants that are coming, a lot of students that are coming out of college are being educated in what the Suzuki method is. And especially, we're in a unique area here, because the Suzuki method really came about 52 years ago when Eastman and Penfield did a partnership. So, the fact that Eastman has been on board with that for so long, they're still sending students out, you know, kind of with that expectation that, yeah, Suzuki's a thing. And, you know, it's something that all string teachers should know about at least. So, this Eastman's not the only school too. You know, there are many other colleges throughout the country that promote that and, you know, educate their students that way.
I think it's dwindling because it does require the before and after. And we're very fortunate in that we have teachers that are very dedicated to providing that to our students. And then, you know, administration that supports that. So, you know, that's something that we're lucky to have.
Yes.
Well, having been the fortunate board member to have introduced the concert last Thursday to the packed audience that I had, couldn't find a seat, so I had to stand up.
It's a good problem.
No, that's a good problem. I was just going to say, I closed my eyes and you would think I was at Kodak Hall at Eastman. The first couple of numbers that you had, just amazing, amazing talent and right here. And, I mean, I also, our Megan was a product of Suzuki and I just can't thank Penfield enough for everything that they did, because it just contributed so much. And we're so fortunate. And, I mean, I will always sing Suzuki's praises, so.
Well, thank you. It's our pleasure to do it. And once again, it's the support of the people sitting before me that make it happen.
And there's another concert this week.
There is. Yeah, shameless plug. So, the concert on Thursday is the Prism Concert.
Is that you, Barb? You're introducing that? Get a seat first. Get a seat first.
Yeah, the Prism Concert, yeah, it's, you know, just a little brag. Yeah, it's going to be awesome. So, it's going to be great.
Well, I think a lot of us have a experience that goes way back with our, some of our kids. My kids have long since graduated and two of them are musical. And one of them really went through this music program with the jazz band and the jazz concert and summer jazz camp. And I remember distinctly going to those concerts before we had the new auditorium and I was just always so impressed with what the kids could do. I couldn't believe the talent that I was listening to. But during that jazz camp, that one summer, they went and performed at the Eastman where it was more like the auditorium we have now. I absolutely could not believe, I mean, I was just so impressed prior to that, but then when you had those acoustics from Eastman that we have now.
Sure.
It was so outstanding. I just could not believe what I had heard. And these were high schoolers.
Right.
The talent that we're blessed with amongst our children and then we're blessed with to have you folks bring it out in them. And, you know, music and sports, I think, are universal languages and it just brings people together. Like Carol was saying, it's joyful, it's celebration. So, you know, our thanks to you as well.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have to add, because one of our Suzuki teachers in the district, Mrs. Kennedy Cobles, I've gotten in trouble, so I just want to correct our board president, that it's not talent, it's hard work.
That's right. She has said that.
Talent only goes so far.
That's right.
Talent only goes so far.
Which is wonderful for, I can tell you that when you look up here, there's a number of board members and administrators whose children either were in, are still in, the Suzuki or music program. And it's just been, it's been wonderful. It's one of the reasons we moved to Penfield, because my wife and I have no musical talent. And my children play violin and viola, and now it sounds really good. It does. First grade, they were working on it, but now it sounds really good.
We're starting the recorder at our house this week.
Yeah.
And you know, that's true though, what Mrs. Kennedy says about, it's not talent, it's hard work, but when you, when it's so joyful, it just doesn't seem or feel like the hard work. You know, I know that my kids would come home and they would practice and it would be fun for them.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And that's, and that's really what drives our passion too, you know, is that, you know, getting up every day and coming in and being able to make music with these students and in this community, that's...
Yeah, we're lucky.
Yeah, we are. We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Brian's going to do all the presentations from now on.
Don't say that.
Thank you.
All right. Visitor speaking time. Time is provided within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiations, since it is not proper for the board to discuss these issues in public session. A request to speak comment form must be filled out prior to the start of the citizen's comment period and given to the district clerk. It is expected that speakers will limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on the citizen's comment period based on the length of the agenda. Written communication to the Board of Education is encouraged as well. And we do have a visitor tonight, Josie, is it Cancilla Spatafora?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Oh, hi, everyone. I appreciate all your time in letting me speak tonight. I've lived in the Penfield School District for 15 years. I have two children at Indian Landing School. I have a daughter who is in second grade and my son who's in kindergarten. Just for the record, my children really love school, they really love the staff, so we're very happy, you know, how they're doing at school. I'm here tonight on behalf of my son and all the other students and families that have children with severe allergies that may require the use of an EpiPen or another prescribed auto-injector. My son was diagnosed with a peanut allergy when he was two years old. His symptoms presented, he actually got a very, very small peanut from a trail mix and just vomited profusely for like three, like three instances within a minute. It was very unusual, it was very rare, he'd never done that before. So, we were concerned. And he had an appointment the next week. And we took him and after, you know, the subsequent tests that they did, he was determined that he did have a peanut allergy and was prescribed epinephrine at the time. And on average, there are about two students in each classroom that have a type of severe allergy. The concern with allergies is that doctors really can't predict the reactions that can occur with contact with the allergen. So, a life-threatening reaction is possible at any time. Therefore, you know, there needs to be some very clear and easily accessible, age and grade level appropriate procedures and policies in place, in both the school and in the transportation, on the buses, to help prevent something from that from occurring. This past year, there's been two incidents that have occurred related to my son and his allergy. The most recent incident is the reason why I'm here to speak tonight. But I want to assure everyone that both of the incidents were cleared up. I feel like they were addressed in, you know, a timely manner and was appropriately communicated. There's a, you know, a plan in place and, you know, we're moving forward with that. Mrs. Ware was wonderful. She did a great job communicating and really letting me know what she could do on her end. I know Dr. Sansucci, you were involved with that, so I appreciate that as well, because I know she talked to you. And I know Dr. Putnam, we just met recently and we talked about, you know, some of these things. And we do have a plan as we move forward in some of the next steps. Just as we move forward with this, I would, I'd like to see some consistent and some clear district-wide age, grade level procedures, policies on life-threatening allergies easily accessible, so that parents with these can easily know when they're entering their child, here's like some information, here's somewhere where you could resource, here's where our district, you know, resources are that you can go to. That would be for both the school and for the Transportation Department. I also feel that some education piece on this topic is also important as well, so that people, you know, be aware that this is, you know, it's a life-threatening situation, not just, you know, something, someone's just going to feel sick. You know, it could be life-threatening. So, that could be something for students, parents and the community. Or, you know, it can be addressed at, you know, open house or wherever it's applicable, parent conferences, et cetera. And I also had let Dr. Putnam know that I'd be willing to help in, you know, develop or, you know, advise of any procedures or things that would be that sort. So, I do understand, I know that getting rid or eliminating peanuts and peanut products is not very reasonable. But it's just very important to remember that there are students in classrooms who may not be the ones that, you know, that are standing out for, you know, any other reason other than they have an allergy. And we want to make sure that, you know, we want to meet those needs of those students as well. So, I just wanted to share that with everybody. And again, I appreciate everyone's time and thank you for what you do for the school district and for my family.
Thank you. Dr. Putnam, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, no, it was a pleasure meeting with you as well. And I appreciate you coming and sharing that information. And as I shared with you when we met, and the board knows, always my goal is everything we can do to create consistency within our program, K-12 and beyond, is critical. So, I think we had a nice conversation. We do have a plan in place. There's some things we are currently already looking at. And so, we'll continue working towards that. Because our goal, and my goal specifically, is to create those consistencies between our, especially our transitions between grade and transitions between our buildings, elementary, middle and high school. So, I'm hopeful we can get to a place, and I did share, I have a son with a bee allergy, so if you can get rid of bees, I can get rid of peanut butter, we'll figure it out.
I know. That would be nice.
We need the bees, we need the bees, I think, but.
Yeah.
I do appreciate you coming out and sharing it with the board and the community and just know that, you know, we'll continue working together.
And the board appreciates it as well. We always know and understand that, you know, you're taking time out of your schedule, you have something that you really want us to understand and know, and we appreciate you taking that effort and taking the time. So, thank you for coming out tonight.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, anything for, oh. All right, this is time for Claire, and we know Claire's not here. She's looking at colleges.
So, Claire is looking at colleges and the plan was to return today. Claire is returning tomorrow via airplane and she's in California, so I really couldn't get her so...
Skype.
We could Skype. Skype, it happened, it happened pretty quickly. But, but because she's Claire and she's a great board student rep, she did email me her statements. So, I will read Claire's student rep statements and not do nearly as good as she would if she was here. But, at Harris Hill, since our last board meeting, a DARE officer visited Harris Hill before spring break to talk about safe and healthy decision-making. These are Claire's words. "I still remember DARE from when I was a Harris Hill elementary student. It really does make a difference in educating elementary students about the decisions they may face in the future." Also at Harris Hill, Downbeat Percussion visited to deliver an entertaining drum performance to celebrate the day before spring break. At Cobles, Cobles hosted their Arts and Education Festival on March 27th, where students displayed their artwork and shared musical performances. At Indian Landing, third graders presented their culture suitcases, in which they shared their research on specific foods and customs from different countries. Also, students and staff dressed up as their favorite book characters, showing how reading has inspired the students at Indian Landing. As an aside, me talking, if you go on Twitter and Facebook and look at the photos that were posted from Indian Landing on the Dress Up As Your Favorite Character Day, they are absolutely adorable. Their incredible costumes and the kids had a blast. Maybe the staff more than the kids. Indian Landing also had their annual red and white basketball game at the high school this past Friday. The white team was victorious and proceeds from the event were donated to Make-A-Wish Foundation. At Scribner, the Penfield Boys Varsity Volleyball Team played volleyball for Scribner students in order to have younger students gain interest in the sport. At Bay Trail, Bay Trail's annual March Madness competition had an amazing turnout with great student and staff participation and support. And at the high school, as Claire referenced last board meeting, the letters written on March 14th for the Penfield Strong Assembly were sent to their respective offices last week. Penfield High School's Key Club painted and decorated rocks with positive messages for the Hillside Adolescent Residential Program. And just last night, panelists, which included staff from Penfield School District led a informative, led an informative discussion on anxiety for parents and students in the PH auditorium. And just last night, panelists, which included staff from Penfield School District led a informative, led an informative discussion on anxiety for parents and students in the PH auditorium. So kudos for Claire while she's in California, she's still reporting on things that are happening here in Penfield. Very impressed. So that's Claire's statements.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions? No, okay. All right, superintendent's report.
Okay.
Is it sunny in California?
What's that?
Is it sunny in California?
Yeah.
It's probably warm, I know.
Let's call her right now.
Claire, if you're watching on live stream, it's snowing here.
Hope you're having a good time here.
So this evening, I have some student and staff honors, and then Dr. Sansucci and I will do our annual 2018-19 budget review. And that's where I get to talk all of the wonderful positive things about how great Penfield is, and then I turn it over to Mark to talk about the numbers. So we make a really good team. So our updates are my pieces here, is that it is Scholar-Athlete Awards. So congratulations to our Scholar-Athlete Award teams, our ice hockey team, our boys and girls indoor track teams, and our girls' basketball team. While they all did an incredible job this past season, they're also recognized as Scholar-Athlete Teams, because 75% of the team's roster averaged a grade point average of 90 or greater. School Safety Award, this is really exciting, and this just took place recently. The Penfield Central School District has been named the recipient of Utica National Insurance Group's School Safety Excellent Award for the 2018 at the titanium level. And so Penfield Central School District was one of 152 school districts across New York State, and there's upwards of 800 districts in the state, to receive this award. The award recognizes school districts that meet certain safety criteria, as well as their overall efforts to keep students and staff and visitors safe. So I actually met with Alan McNiff, he's not here this evening, but just to give him kudos, and because he is incredible, he said, while I appreciate that, all the thanks and praise needs to go to our health and safety team. We have a couple of board members, I believe Carol and John Otney, am I correct, that sit on our health and safety team, and so they're very appreciative of all the work that you and the committee have done around this, really focusing on everything from door locks to lighting in the parking lots. I did get to see the spreadsheet of what gets submitted, and it is amazing. So when we talk about safe schools, we always talk about the things that everybody can see, but there's lots of things behind the scenes that are also taking place to make sure that our school is safe and secure for lots of different reasons. And so just kudos to the community, to Alan McNiff, to the board and the committee, so we will find a nice place for this, but that is the very nice award that Alan McNiff picked up on our behalf at the, at the seminar, so, or conference, so, very nice.
Nice.
Again, some great students, Young Women of Distinction finalists. Penfield High School has two seniors, Sarah Grace Hancock and Joanne Jin, who've been named finalists for the Young Women of Distinction Award. And winners of the scholarship will be announced on May 7th. So it's amazing opportunity and a couple of great kids. Athletic signing, congratulations to PHS senior Frankie Gissendanner, who we've talked about a lot at these board meetings because of his run in wrestling this year. And Gissendanner is graduating, he signed a letter of intent to attend Rider University next year, so very exciting. There he is with his principal, Dr. Maloney. We have a donation from the Penfield Sports Boosters. The board has seen this in an email from me, and Global Sports Boosters Club has donated the following, some really great nice-to-have things, such as Boys and Girls Nordic Ski, they're donating dry land training roller skis, bindings and poles. And so in the summer, I would like to have a board workshop where we all get on those skis, binding the poles, and go around the community. Boys have.
Can we go climb the ropes right now?
Absolutely. You let me know, we can get everybody on the ropes course, so we can talk about that for summer workshop.
That'd be fun.
Also, the Boys and Girls Lacrosse, they donated two 10-by-20 folding tents for use in fall weather, which is what's outside right now. Boys and Girls Locker Rooms, two portable whiteboards for teams to use at pre-game, halftime, and practice. And then Shared by Several Programs, they've donated, they'd like to donate three iPad minis and OtterBox covers for the use with what they refer to as Huddle Video Software, which we do have, and athletic video sharing. So they use the Huddle Video in order to review game footage or athletic participation footage and be able to go back and do slow-mo in different angles and look to be a better, a better athlete and a better team. And just wanted to follow up with a donation update and thank you. At one of the last board meetings, we talked about the boosters, and they've already received their thank you letter from the board, that they donated three touchscreen TVs, which are installed, and they are out in the north lot, down by the athletic office and the auditorium. The Penfield Patriots donate, the Sports Boosters donation will help preserve sports history and honor athletic accomplishments. So many thank you to the booster members for their generous donation. And also, I would say a thank you to our Buildings and Grounds guys, men and women who were, had to put them in. But as a reminder, they're not, they're all, they're not connected to the internet, so everything is downloaded onto that screen, and then it stays there. And if you go, you can see at any time, they're interactive. And quite honestly, we have like the Wall of Fame, the Athletic Hall of Fame, that's up on the wall, and we were quickly running out of room. And so now, all of those folks are going to be, all the new ones moving forward will all be in the screen. What I love is if you walk into the north entrance, you will see the big banners, which each season's sports team, but there's not enough room, so at the end of the year, the end of the season, we take those down and the new ones go up. Well, now, all those photos will be in this self-contained screen, and so it's neat to think that you can come back in 10 years and find your soccer picture that would still be on there from the team, the 2018 soccer team, or whatever it might be, which is, which I think is really neat. It's cutting-edge, and it's a great donation, because it's a great example, I think, of a nice-to-have. And so the thank you there. I'm, I'm not done yet.
Oh, I know.
Okay, you want to ask a question?
No, no, I'm not asking any question, I just wanted to comment that I couldn't go to the Angs movie last night, because I was at the booster club meeting, and I personally thanked them.
That's great.
For all this, but I did happen to let them know that football was missing. And they were, they said, oh, no, no, it's there. And I said, no, no, it's not there. And after the meeting, Pete came out and he said, Barb, you're right, it's not there. And I said, well, I just.
Are we adding football?
Well, apparently, there was a glitch.
Okay.
Football is, is coming.
Okay.
And then I also asked about, you know, post or past teams, because the class of 2008 softball team, it wasn't up there.
It's working progress.
I know.
They're working on it, yes. Is there brand-new? Is there brand, they're brand-new?
A little humor.
I know that they are, that's good to know, and I'm glad that you shared that concern in the right spot, which is with the Sports Boosters who donated this great stuff off. So thank you very much. No, thank you, Barb. I did share a little bit from Claire about the red versus white basketball game Indian Landing had, just a little more detail that they raised $1,395 for Make-A-Wish Foundation, and so great, great turnout. And that is the end of my updates.
Okay.
Are there any questions, Barb?
Mine was a comment. Why, it was a comment.
No, I appreciate. So now, we turn into the 2018-19 budget, and I'll start us off here. So as the board is aware and the community has seen, our district goals continue to be the same. I thank you on behalf of the district, to the Board of Education, that consistent goals is very helpful for our academic programs, also when we're planning for fiscal responsibility and partnerships. So when we have similar goals, it's very nice to be able to plan three, five years down the road. Building a Bright Future, we do have this slide, we like to share that when we're talking about budget, and we're talking about budget impact and taxes, it is nice to remind everybody, and the board's already aware of this, but the community is, you know, when we talk about building a bright future, we really are talking about the great things that happen. I'm not going to spend too much time on the slide, because I believe that our ELA teachers and Brian Bricko with our music department sort of did a nice highlight of all the great things that you don't necessarily think of, I hope you think of, when you look at the budget and you think of everything we talk about. We talk about dollars and cents and numbers, but really, it's the impact of our staff and our students, our parents, and our community. And so again, you know, in all of the rankings, which are based on test scores, which we believe strongly is only one piece of a student, a small piece, is their test score, but we do know that, that people buying homes and the newspapers and the media do report on these rankings, and we rank very highly across the board in all of our schools and the district as a whole. Building a Bright Future, our graduation rate from last year is 97%. As a comparison, the state average is 80. 91% of our graduates last year continue on to college, 96% earned a Regents diploma, 74% earned an advanced designation diploma, and that, that's phenomenal in terms of not just graduating with Regents, but actually earning this advanced designation. Very highly competitive SAT scores, we do not prep for the SAT, we don't do SAT prep in our classrooms, we just have strong curriculum that works with students, both with math and ELA, and that relates to the SAT. And Penfield, you know, average score last year was a 1220, whereas across New York State is 1057. Also, I think Brian Bricko earlier today did a great job talking about the 2017 Best Music Community, Best Community for Music Education. Within that, we've had almost 100 students selected for state and county festivals, I've reported on those in our, in our updates at every board meeting. Our Science Olympiad team earned 40 medals at regionals and six medals at the state competition. Our athletics this last year, boys volleyball and a wrestling state championship, numerous county and sectional championships, and just, this is just a fraction of what we do. If we dig deep, we know that our extracurricular programs are outstanding, our students are going and traveling, they're, they're participating, and they're always really showcasing all of what Penfield has to offer. And so that's sort of an update as we head into the budget calendar. I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci now, if he'd like to take us through the calendar and the budget presentation.
Sure. I'm not going to go through the calendar in great detail, because you've lived it. But the other purpose of this, and this presentation slightly altered and amended a little bit, will be the basis for the presentation that we use as we go out into the community and we meet with Rotary and with the PTAs and, you know, with all the community groups. So for them, it's important to understand that, you know, the budget process has been going on for quite some time. It kind of comes to the public's attention, I think the general public's attention, as we get closer to May 15th, and they, the signs pop up and they realize that it's time to vote, and, and the newsletter's getting ready to go out now. So, but for us, for us here in the system, it's been going on for quite a while, beginning back in October, working through some backwards-looking items, as we look at audit reports from last year, some planning as we start to talk about the board's goals and assumptions moving forward, and then beginning really the hard work of the budget and review in January through February and into March. So tonight, we've gone through the budget and all its components, and tonight's the night we must actually approve and adopt the budget. So you'll also be voting on the BOSI's administrative budget, and tonight, as part of that responsibility, you adopt the property tax report card. That has to be done tonight, because the end of this week, by state laws, the last legal day for the board to adopt the board of the budget, in order for us to meet all our timelines and advertising commitments and so on. The last hearing of the budget, the public hearing of the budget's on May 1st, that's really just another presentation in a very formalized way, the three-part budget, that splits up the budget and the data that we've looked at so many times, and in sort of in a different package, in a different way. And then, of course, the vote itself on the 15th. This is where we're at right now. We've been looking, this, you've seen this pie numerous times, you've seen a pie like this, I guess, numerous times before, as we've worked our way through the system. But the pie we've been looking at until tonight was the 1718 pie, because we didn't have this one done yet. It's now done, and the reason it looks so much the same is because it is very much the same. The relative proportions of those pie slices didn't change dramatically from last year to this year. The instructional portions of the budget, classroom instruction, occupational education, so on, along with special education and the special areas form the vast majority of the budget, supported by the other components of the budget, transportation, debt service, and the central office. This is, these are those components year after year, or year-over-year, I should say, and you can see from the bars, again, this isn't a year of dramatic change. We're really moving the program forward. There are some initiatives obviously included within the budget, but this is not a year where the budget in its, in its individual components is changing dramatically. This is the detail of that bysection. You can see that overall, our budget, the budget will be considering for adoption tonight, 98 million, I need glasses, 98,183, two-point, just about $2.7 million increase, or 2.81% on the expense side of the budget. And you can see that varies by component, but mostly in the mid-twos. Transportation, Buildings and Grounds, and Debt Service up a bit more, but that includes in part our ongoing capital project. That's the expense side of the budget. On the revenue side, we always have to begin building with the new reality that we all work under, which is the tax cap. This year's allowable levy growth factor, which is based on inflation, is at 2%. So this is the first time it's been at 2% since the earliest years, in 12 and 13 of the cap. The rate of inflation has finally increased enough to the point that the cap itself is beginning to work. The cap in the formula is at 2%, because the rate of inflation is greater than that, 2.13%. So the 2% tax cap uses two, and the, and the growth of property in our community is about a half of 1%, so we get an adjustment in the formula for that. One thing I'd point out here, you've seen, again, a similar tax cap calculation in the past, but this is reduced slightly from the one you've been looking at. And the reason that it's down just a little bit, I think it's been, it was 2.78, I believe, until tonight, the reason that it's gone down a little bit is we got sort of at the 11th hour, some revised pilot information on the property, for the property on the new hotel.
Hampton.
On Panorama, Panorama Trail, yes. So, and the, just the way the assessments broke out were a little bit different when we put them into our calculation, it raised the amount of pilot amount that reduces the levy. We're below the cap, so it's, it's a little bit of an academic distinction, it'll change what we carry over a little bit into next year, it's not a tremendous change. But I wanted to get it updated, because it'll, the changes trickle over into next year. So also in your packet tonight is a re-adoption of the revised tax cap. I think I'm also going to tell you that in future years, because I had this conversation, this will, I can't remember if this is the second or third time we've adopted the tax cap this year. I had a conversation with my peers and also reached out to the State Aid Planning Service. We're sort of unique in the district in that the board adopts this. Other districts and State Aid Planning recommends that you not adopt it formally. We'll talk about it, I'll enter it, I'll report it to you, but it changes so often and so fast, that depending on board action to do this isn't recommended. It is what it is. So, you know, I wanted to say that out loud. If you don't see it next year, it's not because I forgot, it's, I'll, I'll report it certainly to you, but rather than wait for board action to make the changes, we'll just make it as we go along and keep track that way. But we're at 2.75 for the go-forward year. That's important, because the vast, the majority of our budget, 64% of this budget is composed of the tax levy, about 28% comes from state aid and all the other things that we talk about, draws from reserves, lost book fees, interest earnings, pilot payments, all those other components of the budget really only form 8%. And here, you can see that year-over-year, again, the changes are relatively modest and fairly evenly distributed throughout those three components. In detail, this is what that looks like. So state aid is up about 5.1%. The majority of that is in the form of building aid. Building aid is up because of ongoing projects. We're using that and plan on using that building aid in support of future capital projects. We've always kind of tied those together, so that as, in our planning, as we go forward, the building aid supports projects, and we try and time the projects so that those move forward in lockstep. Sales tax is up 150,000, about 4.2%. You see the change in pilot, it's actually up 33%, $31,000. Penfield doesn't have a significant number of pilot agreements, you know, we are not rush Henrietta with, you know, 15 times that number, but they do impact us and they do affect the calculation. Other revenue, up a bit, fund balance remaining at about 2% of the budget, that's what our auditor, I think, and what bus practice would recommend is, in terms of what you use of prior year's revenues to support the budget, shouldn't exceed about 2% of the overall. So that's about where we're at. Workers' compensation reserve is, is down, and ERS reserve remains the same from year to year. That leaves what I'd always call sort of the revenue of last resort, the tax levy, at 2.6%. That, that revenue picture then balances our budget. That revenue picture then balances our budget. At 2.8% on the expense side, 2.6% is a levy increase. The other change is then balancing the budget at 2.8. So, you can see here how that works together. We finished the year, we finished the budget process under the tax cap and in balance, which is interesting and necessary. But what people really want to know is, what am I going to pay? Which gets down to the tax rate. So, this has been a year, this is a year of a lot of changes, and this reflects what's going on in our community and really in the country. The equalization rate is the expression, the numerical expression of what the assessments in a community, so what the assessor says your house is worth, which isn't always a fast-moving figure, with what the market value in comparison to the market value of the house is. So, 100% equalization rate means your assessment is about what your market value would be. I could sell my house for about what it's assessed at. If my house is assessed at $50,000 and I can sell it for 100, the equalization rate is 50%. So, that's just how that works. So, a falling equalization rate means that assessments are not keeping up with the increase of the value of property in the communities. Not individual properties. This is done in mass, in bulk, on a statistical basis. So, Brighton has been falling for some years. The way that that gets corrected, and it's fallen to 89% for last year's roll, the way that that's corrected is a reassessment. Brighton is going through that this year, and so they will return to 100%. Penfield has fallen to 95. That, and Macedon and Walworth have both fallen to 98%. The market is hot, and that's the numerical expression of that. It affects us because those changes in equalization rate turn into changes in the tax levy and the way it's distributed. So, here are the rates. These are estimated rates based on the estimates of assessed valuation. These are truly estimates at this point because the assessors have not finished their job yet. They are obligated to post a tentative roll May 1st. So, all this work done in advance of the tentative roll being posted. Once it's posted, there's grievance, they have to get through that, and then move towards a final roll. We obviously have an obligation to our taxpayers to give them our best guess as to what their tax rates are going to be, but at this point, it remains, I don't like saying guess, but it's stronger than estimate. So, this is an estimate, our best estimate of what it's going to be. And you can see, because of those differences in equalization rates, it drives changes in, relative changes between the towns in the tax rate. So, Penfield's falling, Brighton going up, Brighton's tax rate on assessed, because the rate works on assessed, is falling quite a bit. Does that mean your tax bill is going to go down in Brighton? It depends on how you came out in the assessment process, right, in that reassessment. I'm told, I've been told through the years that generally in a reassessment, about a third of the properties remain the same, about a third decrease slightly, and a third increase. I've never heard from anyone whose property stayed the same or decreased. So, to my way of thinking, they only go up. And how much up comparison to a 13% decrease depends on your individual circumstance. But we provide this because, and it'll be in our newsletter, because people know obviously what their assessments are, they can use this estimate to make judgments about the impact on them. The rate goes up in Penfield because that equalization rate is falling, so the rate has to move up to keep pace with that. They have already begun and contracted for a reassessment, so next year will be a reassessment year for Penfield, and the whole thing will reverse again. So, this, I'm not going to go through this. This is sort of what I just said, but I just wanted to show you the calculations year over year based on sort of a hypothetical assessment, this example of how that would work. So, here we see equalization rates in 1718. You see at the bottom, that $100,000 home, a home that I could sell at arm's length in the market for 100,000, would have been assessed at about 89 on average across the community. So, the way the math of that formula works is their tax rate would have been 28.59 because when I multiply 28.59 times the $89,000 assessment, my market value house, I should pay the same, about $2,500 as someone in Penfield or Parenton who have different, that whole process, that complicated formula is intended to equalize between the towns. Does it do it perfectly? Of course not, but that's the way it's designed and that's what it's intended to do. Here we move to 1819. It still works. You know, the formula still works, but it's the shifts in between the years that sort of causes the friction and the change. So, here you can see our estimate on a $200,000 home. This will be in the newsletter as well. The changes year over year in the assessments and we also display the equalization rates, and we estimate an impact with star on that $200,000 home and what you would expect your tax bill to change. Again, this is an estimate, but we provide it so that people can make an informed judgment about the impact of the budget on their finances. Overall, though, I think the three important numbers are budget to budget, the increase in spending, we're at 2.8%, the levy 2.6%, and state aid increasing 5.1. That 2.6% now, when we add it into this slide for next year, will change it slightly. I think we'll still be at about 1.8, and we might be approaching 1.9 because it's slightly over 2, but that's an 11-year run below 2%. We'll be able to continue to say that we're a 2% district before that was a law. Also on the ballot, moving away from budget, there are other important, from the budget itself, there's some other important initiatives that the public's going to be asked to consider. Probably most important is the election of three board members for three-year terms. Proposition 1 will be the general fund budget. Proposition 2 will be bus purchase. We're requesting authority to continue our bus replacement plan and purchase 430 passenger buses and 366 passenger buses. That money will come from the school bus reserve and from the general fund budget. And of course, and finally, capital improvements. We're requesting authority for the 2018 capital improvement project, the elementary additions project, which is about 22.5 million dollar project, which is supported by state aid, by existing debt service, falloff in existing debt service, and $7 million in funds from the capital reserve. So, we don't anticipate an impact on tax rates as a result of that proposition. There'll be more explanation of that on April 23rd here at the high school in the Commons. We have banners, actually, that show the project, provide some basic information. We'll sort of unveil those banners and talk about them at the meeting on the 23rd. And then, the individual banners themselves, there's one for each building, and so Cobbles will get the Cobbles Plan, Indian Landing will get the Indian Landing Plan, and so on. Those will be on display in the buildings until May 15th, the vote, which will be here at the high school from 6 till 9, along with the general fund budget and those other propositions. So, that is that in terms of, oh, and I tell you that again. May 1st, 2018, the budget hearing, let's not forget that, and then the vote here on the 15th. All of this, the backup documentation, the conversations as we move through the year are all online at www.penfield.edu under quick links. So, videos, detailed budget information, backup documentation, and so forth. The board has lots of backup documentation. If you have any questions, now I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members, any questions or comments? Lisa?
I have a question. How do they set these equalization rates? Like, is it yearly?
They're established yearly, and it's done, you know, when your house is sold, that sales information goes to the State Department of Tax and Finance. They're responsible for establishing those rates, so they do it on a statistical basis. They're keeping track of what are houses selling for, and they know what they were assessed for, so they can, you know, I think it's a little more sophisticated than that. I think there's some statistical testing and weighing that goes on in there. There are some triggers. They won't change the equalization rate, I know, until it exceeds 5%. So, once it's, until that difference exceeds 5%. So, once it starts to move, you know, it tends to keep moving and move kind of fast. So, for example, the change out in Wayne County at 98%, that tells me there was more than 5%. They established it at 2, and next year, unless they get on it, it'll probably move a full 5 next year.
So, when do you get notification? Like, is it a certain time every year?
It depends. Some of the assessors are very good about calling me and letting me know. Some are less, you know, aware of that. But it is, the information is posted and available online. That's kind of at the 11th hour, to be honest with you. We call the assessors, we start our process in sort of mid-year, call the assessors, ask them for, you know, where do you think you're going to come in on assessment? We sort of, I badger them a little bit about that, and we'll also ask about equalization. Are there any changes? Do you know about anything? So, it's a communication process.
Well, also, I think you did a great job explaining something that's one of the most complex things that most people will never understand.
It doesn't, it's not intuitive. It doesn't make sense, which makes it very hard to explain.
And there used to be a time when the assessors would do this every two to three years, and now it's becoming every year because of the growth and the price increases, and a lot of them have to farm this out to other experts too because they're overwhelmed with the number of parcels that they have to cover legally. So, if we were a school district with one town, it would be very easy.
Right.
But I don't think that's the case in any of our districts in Monroe County, per se.
Right. And you know, and it's interesting because it affects, as a practical matter, it affects the towns differently than the schools, because the town's responsible for assessment. But the town levies its taxes over the town, so it's really insensitive to what the equalization rate is. They don't really care, right? It doesn't affect the town as a taxing jurisdiction. Assessments go up or go down, they assess the rate, but it's just the single town. The equalization rate has these sort of dramatic swing differences when there are multiple towns in a taxing jurisdiction and there's the changes in between. So, you know, the towns are responsible for it, the towns have to pay for the reassessments, the towns have to take the calls from angry taxpayers and deal with all of that, but it's the schools that are affected by it. So, it's, you know, that disconnect, I think, kind of drives some of that odd dynamic.
If you want an experience in civics, go to a grievance day at a town and just sit there and watch because it's incredible. But there's a great explanation, Mark. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah. Could you go back to the slide that says estimated 2018-19 tax rates?
Sure. This one?
A couple more.
This one.
So, I'm looking at this, and I'm just not quite sure I understand, and I just want to verify. Now, I understand our levy, and our levy's going up 2.6.
Correct.
And so, if you look at the tax rates, it shows the tax rate's going down, and even for when you have a consistent 100% equalization rate. So, is that tax rate going down because the tax base is going up?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's...
That's why our tax rate, our levy's going up, but the tax rate's going down because there's more of a tax base?
Correct. There's multiple things going on in here. So, right now, in Brighton, I'm estimating an increase in assessed valuation of around 11 or 12%, I think, based on my conversations with the town. Assessment in Penfield is growing by, I'm estimating, again, based on these conversations, Penfield's growing by about 1%. And Penfield in and of itself is, you know, the vast majority of our assessment. There's, you know, over a billion dollars' worth of assessed value in Penfield, so that growth...
Brings it down.
Brings it down.
Okay. That's one, make sure I understood that properly.
And that growth brings the overall sort of rate down, and then the equalization rate redistributes it between the towns, making it even more confusing.
So, growth is good.
So...
Any other questions or comments?
Can you explain that 100% change in workers' comp reserve?
Yes. So, we'd adopted, we had a workers' comp, we had approved a half million dollars to support this year's budget out of the workers' comp reserve. We'd established that reserve a number of years ago based on a shortfall. We belong to the Workers' Compensation Health Insurance Consortium, and the consortium had a deficit, a shortfall, so we established a reserve against that shortfall. The consortium's been doing better, and they're gradually working their way out of that deficit situation. So, our intention is to reduce that draw, to, over time, reduce the level of funding in the reserve. So, once they come out of it, we should be, you know, we can over the next period of several years, reduce our overall level of funding in the reserve because we're holding it in anticipation of that potential deficit. So, we'd appropriated a half million dollars out of the reserve, which was the majority of the reserve, honestly, into this year's budget. Earlier this year, in our reserves discussion, we're probably not going to need that in support of this year's budget, so we reduced it, and we'll plan on using that in support of the budget in future years. So, we're going to lay back a little bit, and then, in anticipation of future deficits in our budget and future difficulties, we'll use it to offset future increases. In part because, if you'll remember, this year, workers' compensation and, I'm sorry, not workers' compensation, yeah, workers' compensation was a decreasing area in our budget. We had a significant decrease in the budget in that year as well. So, we didn't think it was important. We thought it was not a good idea to sort of double up with reserve draws and decreasing because getting back to, getting both back would be hard in the future.
Thanks.
Any others? Okay. Thank you very much, Mark.
Certainly.
That concludes superintendent reports.
All right. Thank you. All right. We are on page four of your agenda. We have facilities change orders as listed in the agenda. The above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by architect Vic Tommaselli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Mark Sansucci. May I have a motion and a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Under financial items, approve and adopt budget. The Board of Education must adopt the budget for presentation to the voters on May 15th, 2018. May I have a motion and a second that the budget for the 2018-19 school year be submitted to the voters for approval on May 15th, 2018, in the amount of $98,183,269?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. 2018-19 budget property tax report card. Each year prior to the school budget vote, all districts are required to submit a property tax report card to the New York State Education Department, or the SED. The report includes information on the proposed school budget and projected tax levy, as well as restricted, unrestricted, and appropriated fund balances. The required report showing information for 2017-18 and 2018-19 is attached. Property tax report card is due by the next business day after board approval, but no later than April 23rd, 2018. later than April 23rd, 2018. Be it resolved that the Penfield Central School District Board of Education approve the 2018-19 property tax report card as presented. Be it further resolved that the Deputy Superintendent for Business and Finance is directed to submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department by the end of the next business day following this approval. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? John?
Is that, does the, does that go to the comptroller as well for this district health report?
Yeah. It does go, it's, the comptroller is the, has the website, so we file that directly with the comptroller.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
That's right. Some we file with, oh, wait, no, let me think about it for a second. The property tax report card gets filed with the comptroller. The property tax notice gets filed with the State Education Department. Where do I have that? Backwards.
You have that right.
I have that right? Yeah.
So this gives them a general look at, just a quick...
Right. It's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a requirement. So the, when the legislature passed that law, the requirement was that it be filed, and so, with all those various agencies. And so the comptroller established sort of one-stop shopping that then shares it with everybody else.
All right. Thanks.
John Piper, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right. We have the motion on the table. All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Adoption of the Tax Levy Limit. Chapter 97 of the laws of 2011 enacted by the state legislature and the governor established a property tax cap on the amount that a school district's property tax levy can increase each year. This law requires that school districts submit to the state comptroller, the Commissioner of Education, and the Commissioner of Taxation and Finance any information necessary for calculating their tax levy limit for the coming school year, no later than March 1st. The comptroller has developed a web tool that will allow districts to satisfy this reporting requirement via a single online submission. Based on the information and guidance available at this time, the 2018-19 levy limit for Penfield has been calculated as set forth below. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby approves the submission of the tax levy limit of $63,384,430, as calculated in accordance with guidance set forth by the state comptroller, the commissioner of education, and the commissioner of taxation and finance. This tax levy limit represents an increase of 2.75%. And be it further resolved that the tax levy limit, plus all exclusions as set forth in the law, is hereby established at $63,384,430. This maximum levy increase after exclusions represents an allowable increase of 2.75%. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Intermunicipal Fuel Agreement. Monroe One BOSI's currently refuels the vehicles used for the Penfield Central School District Driver Ed program at our pumps located at the bus garage on Five Mile Line Road. BOSI's One Transportation refuels their three 60-passenger buses at the Diesel Fuel Island at Fairport Transportation. However, Fairport Transportation and their fuel pumps will be out of service from June 22nd, 2018, through December 31st, 2019. Monroe One BOSI's is asking permission to use our depot to fuel the three buses during this time. The district currently allows the Monroe County Sheriff's Department and the Penfield Fire District to fuel their vehicles at the district pumps. The district is reimbursed for this gas based on our cost of gas on state contract, plus a 10 cent per gallon surcharge. The agreement with Monroe One BOSI's is under the same terms. Monroe One BOSI's estimates that they will use the depot to fill the 60-passenger buses a total of three times per month. We propose amending the current agreement with BOSI's, excuse me, Monroe One BOSI's to include the bus refueling. Entering this agreement with the Monroe One BOSI's does not pose a burden on the district. Approval is recommended. Resolution authorizing intermunicipal agreement, whereas Monroe One BOSI's Transportation has indicated a desire to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District, and whereas the Board of Education finds that there is mutual benefit to such an arrangement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized to amend the intermunicipal agreement with Monroe One BOSI's Transportation to include both driver ed and bus refueling. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Donations. Donations totaling $13,972 for items in the 2017-18 budget were received by the district schools, as shown. Cobbles Elementary PTA Arts in Education, $2,500. Indian Landing Elementary PTO Poster Printer, $5,300. Scribner Elementary PTA Arts in Education, $2,072. Harris Hill Elementary PTA Arts in Education, $3,000. And Scribner, bless you. Scribner Elementary PTA Buddy Benj, $1,100. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $13,972 to the 2017-18 budget, as shown above? The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Policy Review. Dr. Putnam?
Happy to. So we have a first reading of three policies. The new board member orientation, student representative to the Board of Education committees of the Board, some minor changes, updates, to both put it into what our current practice is, and add some pieces around. The new board member orientation involves not just local conference, I think it involves adding around the Monroe County School Board conferences, I'm looking at our policy committee. We added sort of, just really put it into what our current practice is. And those are online for people to go and take a look at. For second reading, for the first three, the ongoing five-year review, we did get feedback, some comment on 1613. Actually, Lisa shared that feedback, and that change, the changes were brought to the policy committee and agreed upon, so you'll know there are some changes in that. And the others are to, for second, were to really remove the word ensure, and we didn't get any other feedback except for the one on 1613.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. On page seven, then. May I have a motion and a second that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, wait.
No, no.
No? Well, you were, oh, okay. Okay. So no questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Okay. Is it time to go home yet?
No.
Okay. PHS Textbook Approval. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the above-recommended textbook as presented on March 27th, 2018, titled Chemistry: The Central Science AP Edition?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. All right. BOSI's Board Candidates. The following candidates have been nominated by their respective boards for positions as members of the BOSI's Board. It has been past practice for component boards of education to endorse the candidate nominated by the Board of Education whose, quote, "seat is up for election." Seat number one, resolved. To cast one vote for the election of Robert Dixon, resident of the West Aronacote Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOSI's Board, for a term of office which will begin on July 1, 2018, and end on June 30th, 2021. Seat number two, resolved. To cast one vote for the election of Thomas Nespaka, resident of the Webster Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOSI's Board, for a term of office which will begin on July 1, 2018, and end on June 30th, 2021. Seat three, resolved. To cast one vote for the election of Maureen Nupp, resident of the Fairport Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOSI's Board, for a term of office which will begin on July 1, 2018, and end on June 30th, 2021. Seat four, resolved. To cast one vote for the election of Sora Sax, resident of the Brighton Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOSI's Board, for a term of office which will begin on July 1, 2018, and end on June 30th, 2021. And seat five, resolved. To cast one vote for the election of Nancy Semel, resident of the East Aronacote Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOSI's Board, for a term of office which will begin on July 1, 2018, and end on June 30th, 2021. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. BOSI's Administrative Budget Vote. May I have a motion and a second that the BOSI's Administrative Budget, in the amount of $5,647,175, for the 2018-19, or, 2018-2019 fiscal year, be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Or do I, I move on, right, to this before we vote?
No.
Oh, excuse me. No, you were right. Sorry.
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Sorry, got confused there. Chairperson of Election. Board approval of the chairperson of election for the May 15th, 2018 vote is required. The chairperson of election is an eligible voter of the Penfield Central School District. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve Gregory Coughlin Esquire to serve at the election of Board of Education candidates and vote on the budget on May 15th, 2018, as chairperson of election?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Chief Inspector of Election. Board approval of the Chief Inspector of Election for the May 15th, 2018 vote is required. The Chief Inspector of Election is an eligible voter of the Penfield Central School District. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve James Ryan to serve at the election of Board of Education candidates and vote on the budget, and vote on the budget on May 15th, 2018, as Chief Inspector of Election?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Inspectors and Assistant Clerks of Election. Board approval of election inspectors and assistant clerks for the May 15th, 2018 vote is required. All inspectors and assistant clerks are eligible voters of Penfield Central School District. We have the list of everybody who is an election inspector, all on the agenda, which is online. May I have a motion and a second that the Board approve the above as election inspectors and assistant clerks for the May 15th, 2018 budget vote and election?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Oh, yes.
One quick question.
Yes.
James Ryan's listed in both places. Is that, is that just a normal course of action, or is that already done?
It's normal, because he could, so he can work the voting machine as well as be, or at the desk of the...
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. All right. President's Remarks. Meet the Candidate Night. This event will be held Monday, April 30th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the library at Penfield High School.
Right here.
Same time, same state. No, okay. All right. And then my other remark I wanted to make is about that movie Angst that you brought up when Nicole was here, and Lisa, and John Otney, and I, was anybody else able to attend last? No, you were at the, right. And...
Sorry.
Yes, Tom was there. Jim Piper was there. Barb Gregory was there.
The Sansucci family was there, but Mark was actually at the office doing work, so he wanted to be there.
I see. Well, what I wanted to just touch base on, somebody had asked a question about what it is that Penfield does, and I had to just write down a few notes, because this wasn't an exhaustive thing that we do, but amongst other things, this is what was mentioned, about our health curriculum, helping the students coping with anxiety. We have Mindful Mondays, focus on mindfulness. We have restructured counseling seminars, teaching, looking at the teachings of Kenneth Ginsberg's, Ginsberg's work. They had that book there, Teaching Your Children to Thrive, studying healthy habits, resiliency in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, and on up. In PE, there are various mindfulness activities, professional development for teachers and staff, training for daily classroom activities, embedding into the classrooms to build a better relationship with the students. And then there's a new link on the website about the mental health resources that we offer. So we, I wanted to reiterate that, because we have such a commitment to educating the whole student. And when you can put a list like that together, which isn't even everything, it really does show the commitment and the work we're doing, that our administrators, our teachers, you know, that, and that the community is supporting. So I wanted to bring that to the forefront, because I was very proud to hear that. I mean, you know it, but when you hear it all like that at one time, it's, it's, it's pretty impressive. So I am pleased that we are so committed to the whole student. These are, these are weird times, and so they need it. And I'm happy that we do it. All right. Unfinished business. The Board of Education's schedule of meetings. And then the special meetings will be scheduled as required. Meetings are generally held on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM in the library at Penfield High School, unless otherwise noted. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education meeting schedule be approved as listed above?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. All right. Any new business? Mark?
It's not really new business, but I just wanted to point out, I was looking at the upcoming meetings. We leave the budget presentation, we talk about the budget and the budget hearing, but we do have the capital project. There's a capital project, public information meeting, I didn't see it in the presentation.
Well, it was there.
Good reminder, anyway.
Yeah. It was, no, it was there. It's, it's, that's okay.
The 23rd, right?
It is. That's right.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Can we go now?
There being no other new business, may I have a motion and a second that our meeting be adjourned at?
8:56.
8:56 PM.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you.